Produced by Rooted in Rights, a program of Disability Rights Washington. Seattle City Council District 7 Transportation and Sustainability Candidate Forum. Hosted by the Mass Coalition, Transit Riders Union, Tech for Housing, and the Housing Consortium.
And I just want to thank you all the sponsoring organizations. A lot of different organizations came together for this on. Green 52 Seattle, Black Lives Women Scientists, Disability Rights Washington, the Housing Development Consortium, Queen Anne Greenways, Rise Up Uptown, Rooted in Rights, Seattle River Greenways, Seattle Parks Foundation, Seattle Subway, Sierra Club, South Lake Community Greenways, Seattle Transit Blog, Transit Riders Union, Transportation Choices Publishing, and the Erdens. So, thank you to all the sponsoring organizations for making this possible. And next up, we have the moderator, and her bio is circulating at the back. And she is probably one of the city's foremost transportation journalists, Erica Barnett. So, let's give it up for her.
So, to start out, I would like to acknowledge that the land that we stand on today is the official home of Coast Salish people. The official one will all track the bands in the Duamis, Sukamis, Talalas, and Wamshuht Nations. I ask that we take this opportunity to thank the original caretakers of this land for a little bit. And with that, I want to just jump right in. Today, we will not be having introductions, except for 10 seconds, in which you can each tell us your name. And you got your thing. I'll start with Jason Williams on the stage left. And if you don't mind throughout this forum, if you could say your name when you answer every single question of the people who are visually impaired.
Jason Williams? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Press that button.
Jason Williams?
This doesn't count. Hot mic.
Hello?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Jason Williams, I walked here after taking the sound check.
Gene Burris, and I walked here.
I'm Daniella Lusum Ying, and I took it over.
I'm Michael George, and I walked here from a couple blocks.
Hello, my name is Isabel Kerner, and I drove here. Sorry.
Hey, I'm Jim Pugil, and I took the number two from Queen Anne.
Hey, Andrew Lewis, and I walked here from work.
James Johnson, and I drove here due to my own personal disability, and made it fine.
Don Harper, took the number two. I was surprised to see you, but I was buried in the back.
All right. First question, you're going to have one minute each for these. And please say your name when you start answering. We'll start with Gene. How can you make Seattle streets, including sidewalks and intersections, safer and more accessible for everyone, including people with disabilities? There's two mics up there.
Gene Burris, I think, I think part of what we can do is better work on traffic lights. In my neighborhood, I live downtown. They're, they've begun a process of actually putting the walk, the dumb walk sign up early so that traffic has some free reign to turn right, and that is all, and isn't always being interfered with. Pedestrians and traffic aren't always interfering with each other. So, I think working on the traffic lights and doing a lot more of that downtown would help alleviate some of the safety issues that I think people have encountered.
I'd like to mention Arthur is our timekeeper up here, and he'll be holding up signs when it's time to start counting up, and let's start this up. Can you repeat the question? Sure. How can you make Seattle streets, including sidewalks and intersections, safer for everyone, including people with disabilities?
Daniella, and the first thing that you should start doing is making sure that you have ramps on all of the sidewalks. It's a great way to not have people in wheelchairs and those with strollers trying to go off the side of the curb or get on into incoming traffic. So, that would be the first thing that I would try to do is those curb cuts, and make sure we do that concurrently so that we're not wasting money and we do the same blocks at once.
Michael George, the first thing that I would do is make sure that we adequately fund Vision Zero. It is, it is a real necessity, and a lot of things that will make us safer. The next thing I would do is expand the Home Zone Program. I think we need more sidewalks in this city, and it's unrealistic to think that we can build them using traditional methods, and that will allow us through traffic coming to make all of our streets safer for walking. I am open to the block the blocks legislation. I think we do need to keep people safe in our intersections. I live downtown, I walk just about everywhere, and I can tell you as a dad with a stroller, it becomes very apparent where we have dangerous intersections. There are a lot of curb cuts missing that force you into traffic, and every time I'm forced into traffic with a stroller, I, and the first thing I think is wholly, wholly on, but I'm not doing this in a wheelchair. That would be dangerous. So, I also think we need to make sure that our curb cuts are right. I think there are a lot of places where crosswalks are not. That's all the time I have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Isabel Kerner, and so I just want to bring up a few points in terms of making the streets and sidewalks safer for pedestrians. So, I have a man, his name is Richard Barron, and he emails me quite often, and you might have gotten the emails, but it's recently been brought to my attention that for people, particularly with disabilities, one of the biggest issues is that line bikes and bike shares are not being parked in adequate spaces. And if you can just imagine yourself having to be in a wheelchair, and you're taking the sidewalk ramp, and suddenly halfway through the sidewalk, you know, you can't get around because of the line bike, that's a really big issue. And then, as far as timing the traffic lights goes, we are in the same system as Bellevue, so we have adaptive signal timing of the lights. The problem is it's just not all connected in one way yet, but I think we could potentially split that up into a few different sections, or a few different systems, so we could get the traffic lights timed a little bit better and not have to wait for everything to go up downtown to get it working. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Jim Pugil. I'm a big believer in education. We have to teach every driver, our new drivers or those who are being recertified, to be aware of pedestrian, bicycle, and disability transportation. I know that metro transit does it, community transit does it. Having been a police officer for many years, I know that we also have to reach out to our immigrant communities, specifically our elderly immigrant communities. They get hit quite a bit along Kingway South, Rainier Avenue South, and also by the light rail train. I agree with Michael that we have to get to Vision Zero. We have about 12 to 20 fatalities a year. We also have to have the bike share companies be more responsible about where they store their bikes, so the vision impaired and the differently abled in wheelchairs or other walking devices or mobility devices don't have to drive around them or bump into them.
Hi, Andrew Lewis. I'm, you know, coming down to the end of the table here, echo a lot of what's already been said. Ramp coverage on all sidewalks is very important. I think that we need to make an emphasis as a city that when we're going into a neighborhood and doing some kind of infrastructure project, like replacing a water main or putting something in, then we take that opportunity to put in some concurrent development into the sidewalks in that neighborhood. That could be an opportunity to replace the ramp, it could be an opportunity to widen the sidewalk. That could be one of the strategies that we use. I'm also supportive of rental scooters and bikes as transportation options in the city, but we definitely need to have some kind of plan in place to make sure that we're not obstructing sidewalks. So, I would echo that as well.
Yes, James Johnson. I'm definitely in favor of the block the blocks legislation that's being talked about now. We need to really enforce those regulations and ticket folks that are blocking the ramps, the disabled ramps off the curbs and curb cuts. There should be no excuse for those kind of behaviors and driving patterns that are let go a lot of times very idiotly. Also, in regards to our traffic signals, I'm in favor of our, more of a very well timed traffic signals during peak hours, it has one set of settings on it. During lesser peak hours, it's set to another setting to keep on making sure our traffic flows as effectively as possible. Thank you.
Wow, great ideas. Don Harper, the first thing I would like to do about transportation is to get a realization for everybody to realize they're all part of the transportation. Walkers need to be aware that cars may not stop. Cars need to be aware that pedestrians may not be looking where they're going. Bicyclists need to take care. We all need to work together to make this transportation system work. No one person has a superior right of way when it comes to transportation. There's so many good ideas here, black box, curb cuts, cycle timing, absolutely. All of that is very important, and I'm fully supportive. Thank you.
Jason Williams? We absolutely have to get this right, and we have to put equity at the center of everything we do and create legislation on this issue. And to that regard, on the city council, the first thing that I'll do is to ensure those working folks and people of color, seniors, and folks of all abilities are convening to have a leading voice in shaping those policies that we put in place, because their voice matters, and it has to be leading in the policies that we put in place. I agree that block the box, it's unfortunate that that impacts the legislature this year. Hopefully, we get it done in the State House next year. We should absolutely, as has been mentioned, fully fund Vision Zero. As such, we should think about dedicated lanes for bikers, pedestrians, and for people who use scooters. And at the same time, ensure that they have the right of way so that they can get around and get around the city in a safe, fast, and convenient way. What's more is, as has been discussed, is we need to ensure that we say our time?
Many in our city have barriers, I'm sorry, that's good. Okay. There's so many of them up here. I apologize if I turned over and kicked someone to Seattle. Many in our city have barriers to conditional affordable housing, such as an eviction record, criminal record, physical disability, substance abuse disorder, lower income, and mental health disorders. What strategies would you avoid to ensure that those people have access to housing that meets their needs?
Let me?
Yes. Whoever didn't go first.
Daniella Lusum Ying, and the first thing we need to do is really expand the Raptor Housing Program to make sure that we have landlords connecting with people who may be homeless or have a criminal background, and so we know who they can be placed with. So, as long as we work with current landlords who won't look at negative credits or someone who has a criminal record, then that would be the first step, and that's what I do.
Thank you. I think this is a real issue. I think there are a lot of people that are locked out of housing. They can never reach, they can never reach economic independence because they feel homeless. And the best thing we can do is to keep those people out of homelessness by making sure that they get into housing. The first thing that I would do is really expand and create a Seattle Landlord Leas Program to make sure that all the burden doesn't fall on landlords. I also think it is really vital to make sure that if we're not going to have criminal background checks or anything like that, we have a way to mitigate any of that risk, and I think we can do it. We need to fund a program that makes sure that any additional risk is mitigated if there are issues, so that we make sure that when a landlord takes somebody in, they're motivated, and they know that they won't end up with a financial burden, because there's money there to stopgap that. So, I think there are a lot of things that we can do, but first and foremost, I really do think that there needs to be a sign. Thank you very much.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. Many in our city have barriers to conditional affordable housing, such as eviction record, criminal record, disability, et cetera. What would you do to make sure that those folks have access to housing that meets their needs?
Okay, so I know that from the beginning here, it was called a homeless crisis, and then it kind of became a housing shortage of some sort issue, and now it's an affordable housing crisis. And I'm going to just trust my eyes on this one, because I, you know, recently came aware of a completely vacant building across the street from me, a very nice building, about 39 units and 60 squatters living in it. And I know there's a lot more of these vacant buildings, so I don't think we need to build more buildings that already exist, but what I would propose is to use 575 shipping containers, $40 million, have eight site workers at each location, basically, they're like, oh, so you can kind of stack them, make them a dorm or a trade school, whatever, have different designs for seniors who are disabled, you can put them together, and, you know, it would cost $40 million to rent out up to 10,000 people in, you know, six months, if we really just got going. It would also be 23 plots of vacant city land, which we already also have. So, thank you.
I'm a big supporter of Housing First, the groups of individuals, Erica, that you mentioned. I've had experience in rehousing of chronic public inebriates in the late 90s. We worked with Downtown Emergency Service Center, the Downtown Seattle Association, private businesses, and other public entities to create 1811 Eastlake, which was 65-unit housing for chronic public inebriates who were drinking, defecating, urinating in public, and had high barrier housing. I also worked with the Law Enforcement Assisted Divergent Project, which we need very good case managers to work with addicted, to work with the mentally ill, and get the philosophy of Housing First embedded in all of our government. Get the person housed, and then work with them to ameliorate all the other issues that they have been challenged with and been working against for their entire life.
Andrew Lewis? So, similarly, I'm a big supporter of permanent supportive housing. That's the only way that we're really going to get any kind of result with folks, because you've got to house people first before they can take care of the other problems in their life. Now, I think it's going to be hard to convince landlords in a lot of cases to take people in at a low barrier to entry, but there's some incentives we can use. I'm a big supporter of spot housing, where the city or government entities take out long-term leases on rental properties to house folks at a low barrier to entry. I think that when we're doing public projects, and the city is the landlord, or city partners and city housing authorities are the landlords, we should be carving out space in those public projects to make it so we have permanent supportive housing that is low barrier to entry, where the only folks to be convinced are ourselves, and there's very strong public benefit to doing that. So, I favor continuing to incorporate permanent supportive housing into our public projects, and that being a public and consistent commitment.
James Johnson. With the exception of hardcore evicted tenants, homelessness, evicted tenants, also unemployed, chronically unemployed or underemployed, this is many times not in their own fault or their own ability to correct that situation that they find themselves in. I think the city itself needs to find a, create a department, or they'll have caseworkers who can work hand in hand with these folks who are disadvantaged and having challenges to get into that housing. And with that, work directly with the landlords and the apartment building owners and all the rest of those folks to ensure, to give a great sense of assurity that these will be viable tenants, who will be able to be responsible, and the city can have a part of that as well, to help those people be responsible as well.
Yeah, Don Harper. First, I think what we need to do is actually prioritize housing in the city of Seattle budget. This is not something that we have done yet. You can see just by the fact that we're building a $450 million waterfront park to show that we are not prioritizing housing. So, I would like to see us look at the budget and start creating more permanent supportive housing. I'm also very much in support of having a program so that we keep people in housing. So, if they end up $50, $100, $150 short of rent because they got sick or their kid got sick, and it couldn't work, then we can keep them in housing. There's so many good programs that they've mentioned here, working with the landlords and protecting them so that they're willing to rent to all kinds of people, but they're not going to be subject to the loss, which is why they are scared to rent. There's so many good ideas, and I'd love to work with you all on it. Thank you.
Jason Williams? Personally, I'm excited about the waterfront park, because as we focus on addressing the crises of the day that are so important, we also need to think about building the Seattle One tomorrow, and for me, that includes open spaces like the waterfront park. Look, discrimination is not okay, period. The discrimination that Erica was talking about disproportionately affects people who are already on the margins, mostly people of color, people who have fallen into a hard time, and so we need to serve them better. Absolutely, that includes better housing policy, like a Housing First approach of permanent supporting housing. Maslow's hierarchy of needs would suggest that we need to provide folks stable, secure housing first before they can get well and become whole. Secondly, we also need to ensure that folks don't end up on the streets in the first place, and that means improving the financial resiliency of at-risk households. And we can do that in working, the city of Tacoma has done that, doubling down on diversion, and I think that that's something that we could do here in Seattle as well. Thank you.
Gene Burris? So, I'm a resident downtown, and I have a lot of neighbors that are exactly as you described, people with difficulty getting into housing, who are maybe out of prison and have a hard time finding a job. And I'll relay a story to you to tell you. I think one of the things we can do actually is improve the neighborhoods that take away some of the issues that would cause them to fall back out of housing again. One night after a shooting that was literally right across the street from where I live, I was out on the corner talking to the police, and one of my neighbors came up. He would, he described to me how he was, he had been in the penitentiary for 10 years and was in supportive housing right down the street from where I live. And he said the biggest problem that he actually had was that the city was not enforcing the laws around the neighborhood, and he was led right back into all the temptations that landed him into the prison in the first place. And he said the best thing that we could do actually is enforce, enforce the laws and stop the drug market on Third Avenue, actually. Thank you.
All right, next question. What's your vision to get people to the new arena? We'll start with her. What's your vision to get people to the new arena?
First of all, I think it's a question about which arena, but if Key Arena for hockey, that's what we're talking about. I do think we need to expand the capacity of the monorail. We tend to do that, we should do that, it's critical. I also think we need to make better pedestrian access coming from Lower Queen Anne or Uptown, no matter how you call that neighborhood. There are a number of things, including the streetcar expansion that could eventually, if we expand the system, get us to the stadium. So, having dedicated bus lanes, especially during peak travel times, is really important. Even without that stadium, when the current stadiums are full, I use light rail all the time, and sometimes it's hard to get onto a bus or a light rail, because we have, we have capacity issues during games. We need to make sure that we deal with those capacity issues, and that goes for all of those in transportation. Of course, Mercer is another area that's going to be hard, people are going to be digging on the highway, and we need to fix that. Thank you.
So, I actually worked at Seattle Center when the NHL arena was undergoing renovation. It's a pretty innovative renovation, and I'm pretty certain that by the time it's finished, it will be able to house both the NBA team and the hockey team. And, you know, I think we've already got some good ways to get there. I'm not entirely sold on the streetcar, but it goes as I'm told, and it could help, you know, connect the missing portions of it. And we also just created a couple billion dollar tunnel that takes you all the way from Century Field to, you know, right next to Seattle Center. And we have the monorail, and I like the monorail because it's pretty, it's fun, it's kind of a roller coaster the first time you ever go onto it. And I think we really used to emphasize making public transportation enjoyable, visually aesthetic, and I think that would make it a lot more popular people than the way it currently is. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Pugil, I think we have to do a number of things. One, increase capacity to get people to and from. We also have to work with the Convention Bureau, the Uptown Community Council, Queen Anne Community Council, and our new partner down there, who's bringing in 5,000 employees next year, Expedia, and encourage the people who are going to attend not only the hockey games, possibly basketball games, but all the other programming that's going to go on a Key Arena. We have to encourage them to patronize the restaurants and patronize the hotels. Maybe come in a day early, spend the night there, enjoy all the amenities around Seattle Center and the Pacific Science Center. But we do have to work on transportation. I'm concerned. In the 18 years, I'm sorry, the 28 years I've lived on Queen Anne, almost every single parking lot around Key Arena is gone. So, transportation, especially with Expedia moving in, is going to be very tough.
Andrew Lewis? So, you know, I think about this a lot too, just as a consumer of mass transit, because I live in Uptown, right? So, I think about, you know, how am I going to, you know, around once the arena traffic really starts going? And, you know, the Transportation Benefit District is one of the biggest, the greatest things that the city council's done in the last five years. It's coming up for renewal next year, and I think we need to really look at it in terms of how can we drive metro service going into the mid 2020s to emphasize getting people to and from Seattle Center. We've got a really good, a lot of really good connections going to the downtown board of Uptown and going from outer to Uptown, but east to west is mostly just served by the number eight bus, so increasing options going east to west, maybe increasing the amount of mass transit that's on Mercer. And when we're putting in light rail through Sound Transit 3, making sure we have two stations that serve Seattle Center, one at the northwest corner, but also one at the southeast corner. Those are going to be the long-term strategies that we can use to help make sure that we're getting people in and out of the Seattle Center.
James Johnson. Anybody who's been around Seattle for any length of time has seen all the open air parking lots around Key Arena disappear. I mean, there's very, very few left now, maybe just a couple, I count one hand even. And so, parking will be a premium. Parking will be very expensive, and I am in favor of increasing and enhancing our transportation methods to get people back and forth from the parking lots outside the Seattle Center area to the actual Key Arena for basketball and hockey games and concerts. Perhaps as a way we can give an incentive to these 14 and entertainment groups to come in of a 5% or 10% discount on your entry ticket that you pay in, if you take light rail, light rail, the monorail, and instead a little bit more, streetcars, Uber, I mean, there's all kinds of ways to get back and forth, and try to reduce the amount of cars that are on the street at the same time. Thank you.
I've got to admit, I've worked on this a lot, and I still don't know how to get people to the, to the new Key Arena. There is going to be so many people. Mercer is being designed, so it can't handle the transportation. There are no parking lots. Most of the people that are coming in for the hockey are actually in the outer areas of Seattle and beyond. This is where they're coming from. I think a lot of them are going to drive. We're going to have to find places for them to park and park downtown when light rail finally gets here in 20 years. Yes, I think that'll be a great boon if we can convince people to actually increase the cars on the monorail, but so far I've heard no one is willing to do. That might help, but really, you know, I just look out. So, that's the best I can do. Thank you.
Hi, Jason Williams. I'm excited for the new Key Arena. I think it'll be a boon to the district as representative of the district. I think it'd be great for businesses there, also be great for the whole arts economy that has popped up around Uptown with KDXP there and others there. And I think it's a great thing. We do have to worry about this, this traffic issue as a concern though, for a lot of neighborhoods or people who live in the neighborhood. I think more reliable and frequent bus service, especially during peak times with the games is something we absolutely need to do. Second, we need to look for ways to, they partner with neighboring cities all the way down to Angle Lake and up to North Gate, and then as SC3 comes online, so that we can incentivize people who are commuting into this city, from our neighboring cities, to use light rail instead of commuting into the town. Another thing that I'm concerned with is for the residents who call Queen Anne home and Uptown home, is ensuring that they have a place to park, if they have a car, to ensure that, that it's not taken from one of the people who come and visit the game. Thank you, sir.
Hi, Gene Burris. I, I, long term, I think obviously the light rail probably getting to Seattle Center will help, but in the short run, as others have stated, there aren't a lot, there is not going to be a lot of parking around Key Arena. It's going to be a mess. So, what I think we might need to think about doing, at least in the short run, is figuring out where the season ticket holders live, where they're coming from for games, whether it's North Gate, or it's the east side, or is this to Quah, and start to run remote parking lots with shuttle buses into the game. I think, I think people coming to the games are going to get fed up quite quickly with traffic.
I think, I think people coming to the games are going to get fed up quite quickly with traffic and parking, and are probably going to be looking for alternatives, and if we're able to offer kind of specialized shuttle buses that come from outlying areas, I think that would do a lot to solve the problem.
Daniella, that's going A. So a great way for us to ensure that we can continue to have more people get to the new stadium is to expand bus routes and the frequency that they run on game day. Also, we have a place where Uber and Lyft can go, because that's how a lot of people get to the games now. So they have specific drop off and pickup, so they're not stopping in the middle of the street to block traffic. But how are we going to pay for all of this? I mean, we continue to add more and more things. And so we spent $238 million on a streetcar that didn't fit, which is why we need to make sure that we have accountability and transparency in our city government with an independent on it, so we have the money to pay for these extra bus routes, so that we have the money for Uber and Lyft and the monorail to continue to work.
All right, as you all can see, you now have placards in front of you, which means that it's time for lighting round. So just hold up those placards, the tags again, and I will say out loud what people, who are holding up. And please, no sideways placards, none of this, like, you know, this is not, this is not an answer. So pick one, whichever one's closest to your point of view. Do you support the city's current camera removal policy? So everybody, so the majority, I, actually, you know what, I'm going to come up here so I can see. The majority are saying that they do not, so saying no, Jason, Jean, Daniella, Isabella, Andrew, I'm not good at this, sorry, saying yes are Michael, Jim Fugel, James Donaldson, and Don Harper. Do you support making the Showbox building a permanent part of the marketplace market and preventing future apartment development on that site? And preventing future apartment development on that site. Uh, so the majority agree, the no's are Gene Burris, Daniella, that's going A, Michael George, Don Harper, and everybody else said yes. Do you support opening a safe lot?
Excuse me, you said preventing apartment?
Yeah.
Don't agree, sorry.
Don't agree, okay. Michael says don't. Do you support opening a safe lot for people living in their cars?
A what?
A safe parking lot for people living in their cars, yeah. Okay, um, James, okay, so the majority say they agree and they don't agree. So no safe parking lot are Jean, Daniella, Isabel, and Don Harper. Do you support a safe parking lot in District Seven? All right, so that's the same answer as before. Do you support congestion pricing? All right, the majority of folks up here say they don't agree. The guesses are Jason, Jean, and Michael. Do you support legalizing school sharing in Seattle?
I don't know enough about it.
Once we get the bike share.
Jim is opting out of this question. Isabel says no, and Don says no, everybody else says yes.
We need facts and research.
Do you support shallow rent subsidies to enable people who are risk of coming homeless to stay in their homes? All right, everybody says yes. Do you support automated traffic enforcement cameras, so red light cameras? Speed limit reductions and banning rights on red? All right, let's see, the no's are Jason, Jean, Isabel, and Don. Everybody else said yes. I appreciate that, I had to break that up into three questions last night, so thank you for insisting. Do you think Lyft, Uber, and other ride-sharing companies should be required to include wheelchair-accessible vehicles in their fields? All right, everybody says yes. Is the city doing enough to implement Mission Zero?
What?
Mission Zero. All right, everybody says no, and Don is opting out. Last question, the signing round. Do you support funding the Center City Connector? All right, most everybody says yes. Jean, Jim, and Andrew say no. Thanks, guys, we're back to our regular questions. And, and, well, we'll keep it about one minute for now, we're probably going to go down to 45 seconds at some point because I want to get audience questions in. And if you have a question, you haven't submitted it, grab a card and hand it to one of the volunteers over to the left of the room. All right, um, let's see. Seattle has the most regressive tax system of any city in Washington State, which has the most regressive tax system in, of any state in the U.S. Do you think the city has a responsibility to raise significant revenue to address the challenges facing our communities, including the?
Sorry.
Sorry. It's a long question. I'm going to start over. Seattle has the most regressive tax system of any city in Washington State, and Washington State has the most progressive tax system of any state in the U.S. Do you believe that the city has a responsibility to raise significant revenue to address the challenges facing our communities? And if so, what tax policies would you advocate for at the city level?
So, it's all clear. Blame a lot of people, yeah, I don't really think that this is a revenue problem, I think it's a spending problem, and that comes partially to the fact that I've been doing this campaign, obviously $2,500. So you get a lot done with very little resources, as long as you do it the right way. I'm also an artist, so I've had to use that skill before. I think the City Council needs to, one, be able to balance the checkbook, and two, as far as taxes go, you know, I don't, I don't think anybody likes them, so I don't think we will jump in with excitement at the word tax, but I am more visibly conservative, so I would agree that maybe we could change our tax system while we'll have one tax, and then have a percentage of that tax that we get a, basically we give to any tax, uh, public product we want, and that percentage would be dependent on how much money you make. So if you make $50 million and the tax is 10%, and I make $50,000, then I'm paying $5,000, you're paying, you know, $5 million, and you might only get a 2% on it all. 100%, I'll pay even the scale. Thank you.
I think the city of Seattle has some sway over what taxes, what revenues we develop, but we have to work with state and the elected state officials and make sure that we get progressive elected people down in Olympia to reform our tax laws. That's the constitution of the state of Washington. We should examine all of the revenue streams that we have now, and if we determine, which I think we do need new revenue streams to address the homelessness issue, the mental illness issue, the substance use disorder issues, we have to work with the business community and the homeless service providers and get all of us at the table and agree on the proper revenue stream, what it's going to be focused on, and what the accountability be what for that. Knocking on doors today and in the previous weeks, that's one thing that people are seeing and what I'm hearing is levy fatigue and revenue fatigue. They are very generous voters, but they want accountability.
Just a reminder, the same approach.
Andrew Lewis, so yes, I'm a big proponent of getting to equitable taxes. We need to get permission from Olympia, unfortunately, to get what we really need, which is an income tax with high marginal rates on the higher earners and a capital gains tax. I'm actually optimistic that in the next couple of years, we'll be able to get those tools. Just this last session, we got a progressive real estate excise tax in Olympia for the first, after trying for decades to get that. So, you know, I think history is moving quick, and history is moving in the direction of more equitable taxation in Washington State. Going further than that, you know, I do think that as a city, we could do a better job in introducing more performance auditing into how we conduct our affairs. King County has a very aggressive performance auditing program. They've saved $127 million in the last three years through that program. I think we should look at that as a way to be more responsible with the money that we have now while we're still looking at ways to get more equitable tax options.
James Donaldson, if you would allow, I'd like to just read a couple of type notes that I made this afternoon here. In regard to raising more revenue for the city, for a decade, our Senator Ruven Carbaugh, who represents our 36th district, has issued reports to show how much money could be raised just by closing the tax loopholes that have been granted by our legislature down in Olympia. The legislature has created 640 tax exemptions worth tens of billions of dollars. It's a heck of a lot easier to close those tax loopholes or modify them as much as we can than it is to try to get all these other laws and revenue streams raised as quick as possible. Thank you.
Yes, I would be supportive of a state's income tax should we ever get there, but I would also want to say that we need to eliminate the sales tax. This has always been, but it's, uh, conservative members of the state, anyone who's been here long enough, that they didn't like that sales tax was still included because they realized that the income tax would be charged and slowly the sales tax would go up. I don't think that the city should be involved in any capital gains taxes or income taxes. I think performance audits of all of the mayor's office, of all the departments of the city, and of the City Council should be performed. And I think what will happen is, is we're going to see some savings. I think there is enough revenue. We have over a $2 billion budget. I think there's money in there that, a little better planning and a little better guideline on our priorities, that we're going to have enough money to accomplish what we need. Thank you.
Jason Williams, when I go around and talk to folks at the door, people are desperately looking to solve the crisis of today, like homelessness, housing affordability, traffic, and so much more, as well as plant signposts for where we want to go for the future, like conserving our keystone lands and waterways and heritage sites like the Showbox that makes Seattle special, as well as having a greater equitable economy and tax system. I am concerned, however, by some of the comments that I hear, I mean, I share this concern, that the city has lost trust in being good stewards of the public's trust and the public's resources. And I think the head tax was a symbol for that. I think recent public uproar about the Seattle library's levy too, about waiving fees for late books, is another symbol of growing consternation about the city government not spending funds wisely. So in order to achieve this vision that we desire, we need to restore trust and accountability because efficiency also helps us create greater impact later on. Thank you.
Gene Burris, I share the view that I think, I'm not, I'm not certain that we have a revenue problem in the city of Seattle. I, I feel like we need a complete audit and some accountability in the way that the city spends money. While we're spending $200 million on a first-hand streetcar and nearly $1 billion on a waterfront park, I think we have got our priorities a little wrong. I will say on the, on the nature of the taxes that we collect, I've been a plaintiff in lawsuits against the city, both on the income tax and on the waterfront bid. So I am definitely 100% opposed to using local improvement districts, which I think are a perversion of the democratic system, as a way of raising money. And any, any turn to an income tax, I think, I think if a show come on by the city, it's obviously something that needs to be done at Olympia at the state level, and the city shouldn't be entering into lawsuits just for the profit, so, thank you.
Daniella, that's going A. And right now, the city does not need to start collecting more money from us to increase our tax revenue. They have property taxes, levies, utilities, and we're upselling all of Seattle, which means more property taxes for the city to collect, more utilities, more levies that people are paying. People are getting priced out of their homes. Senior citizens can no longer live in their homes because of how they're being priced out. So what do we need? We need accountability, we need transparency. We, Sally Backshop has been going backwards, between her and her husband, saying that the income tax is not constitutional in Washington. Yet they still pass it, and then city taxpayers pay money to defend that. That's not what we need to be doing. Let's use the money that we have now wisely. Let's not bail out the control bike system and then close it a year later. Let's use the money we have with accountability and transparency.
So I would agree with Michael George, I would agree with what a lot of people have said here. I'm not an environmentalist, I believe in the growth advantage in that, but the consequence of that is that there is less net development that drives the price of housing up. So it is our duty to make sure that we fund affordable housing. It's the right thing to do, and it's the only thing that we can do to make this city equitable. I have spent my entire career and life advocating and working professional, working professionally on the intersection of affordable housing and public transportation, and that is something that we need to get right. In terms of revenue streams, it's not just the city budget. I think where we really are losing a lot of our efficiency is at the project level. We really need to look into how we're really affordable housing. I think there are a lot of efficiencies that can be had. It is not the affordable housing developers that are getting it wrong, but some of our funding requirements are forcing them to make choices that are not efficient. There is a number of other things we can do with public transportation that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I don't think it's my turn, it's Jim's turn. Is it my turn?
No, I think.
Yes. Describe your experience advancing racial equity. How has it informed your approach to man-use transportation planning and public outreach?
Racial equity, having been a defendant in lawsuits from ACLU and the Defenders Association and the Racial Disparity Project for disproportionality in drug arrests in Bell Town and Downtown, I learned firsthand the importance of working with traditional allies and traditional adversaries in developing equity in the criminal justice system so that those who become involved in criminality and are accepting to case management and diversion will get a second chance and a third chance to get into permit-supported housing, case management, whether it's a substance use disorder, but it does disproportionately fall on people of color, on immigrants, and quite often on women. So we have to make sure that all of our systems, not only the criminal justice systems, but our transportation systems, I also saw it in a disproportionate amount of enforcement for youth of color in sound transit and metro, and we worked on that fixing.
Andrew Lewis, so, you know, I started first getting involved in politics when I was in high school at the center school here in District Seven, and there's a big social justice ethos to the center school. And, you know, one of the big reasons why I'm in public service is because we need to be doing a much better job in the city of Seattle and being a more equitable place where everybody feels welcome. You know, I'm proud of my work, being a very untraditional prosecutor in the city attorney's office, where I've worked on diversion programs that have gotten people into membership housing and ended up declining cases. I'm proud of the work that I did when I was a member of the Seattle Human Rights Commission, advocating for tenants that were getting forced out of their houses, advocating for people that were experiencing discrimination in the workplace. And, you know, I'm at a high every day to be an ally instead of a savior, and I struggle with that all the time. You know, I think a savior is someone who says, here's what you need to do. An ally is someone who says, here I am, how can I help? And that's how I'm going to approach the constituencies and communities of District Seven. Here I am, how can I help, and what do you need me to do?
James Donaldson, I don't know if you noticed, but I have been in this black scheme of mine all of my life, and it is just a fact of the matter. When you are a person of color, you face racial inequities dating. You are reminded dating that you are a person of color, that you're a minority, that you're not on equal footing with everyone else. I don't know how many, you know, when I moved to my home in Diagonia nearly 40 years ago, there were ordinances on the books that are still there that you could not sell your home to an African-American person, to a person of color. Ordinances on those books that are still there now. I do a lot of work in our own cities, with, like, black men, black boys, black women, black girls. I'm always trying to encourage us to do the best we can. I continue to work, and if you notice up here on the panel, I'm the only person of color running for the city council position. Sam Smith was our first African-American city council member nearly 42 years ago. We need to continue to contribute. Thank you.
Don Harper, and that is going to be a tough one to follow. I don't know if you noticed, I'm a white male, and that, of course, comes with a certain burden nowadays. But as an electrical contractor, I was an employer, and I can tell you that in my employment, I hired anybody who was skilled, and I have. I've worked with women, I've worked with African-Americans, I've hired Hispanics. It just really doesn't matter to me. I'm not colorblind, I see people, I see what they look like, I see how they... I'm not colorblind. I see people. I see what they look like. I see how they act. But in far in the way that I personally live my life, I am... It just doesn't matter to me. What I would like to see is equal pay for equal work. And I think the city of Seattle and its government is guilty of that. I think all our industries are guilty of that. And I think what we need to do is go through what we're asking the large corporations to do, which is to go through every job and make sure every person is getting paid equally.
Jason Williams. I don't believe that being a white male is a privilege. And we need more people to recognize that privilege and to do their work, to put equity at the center of everything that they do. Because if you look at outcomes in education, in education, in wealth, in income, in adverse impacts from climate change, and so much more, the disparity is most stark along racial lines. It's clear that we need to put racial equity and equity more generally for people of all abilities, for people however they identify, at the center of every single policy that we put in place. And as I mentioned earlier, what I will do is make sure that those voices that are most marginalized have a leading role in shaping those policies. I look to the Roadmap Project here in Seattle. I look to the Piala Watershed Project further down south as ways to galvanize communities and give those communities the voice in shaping those policies. I do my role as a facilitator in that process.
Gene Burris. So I think as a city council person, what we can do most is ensure that the city itself is not engaging in discrimination and has the right kinds of diversity programs in place that help people of color and women and minorities into positions that can be role models for the rest of the city. But I think a zero tolerance policy for discrimination in the city and in the city government is certainly what is needed. Obviously, the police department has had issues with this, and I don't think that there is a choice to be made between professionalism in the police department and then effectively doing their job. And I think we can have both, and I think part of the job of the city council person will be to ensure that that happens.
Danielle Lozak, so many. This is great. Thank you, James, because to continue this, he's not the only person of color. I am Hispanic. My mom's from Chile. I grew up in Chile. I am fluent in Spanish. So everyone who is of color deals with us every day with people assuming what color they are. My husband is half Chinese, half Japanese. My kids are not gonna know what they are, but I teach them every single day that color doesn't matter. We are all in this together. It doesn't matter that they're Chinese or Japanese and that their parents were not allowed to get married. What we need to do is make sure that we start with education from a young age and that everyone, no matter what Seattle public school you are in, has that equal opportunity for the education, no matter what color you are, and not assuming that people are white or are Hispanic or aren't.
Michael George. So I've spent my career working on huge infrastructure projects, including every light rail line that runs through all these different communities and a whole bunch of other public projects. And there is a lot of outreach that's done. We have the Racial Social Justice or the Racial Equity Toolkit. We have, we talk about redlining, and we have a whole bunch of other things, inclusive of eye training. But we're not getting the job done. We just talk the big game. I can tell you in a lot of those meetings, outreach meetings that we're in, what happens is the people that are really trying to get a voice from are not there. First of all, they don't trust the system, so they don't show up. We don't do a good job speaking their language, whether that's literal and have translators or whether that's just professionals going out and speaking in big words that just turn people off. We need to do a much better job proactively bringing the people to the table and discuss the system that can't get to these meetings to actually bring their voice. And then we need to genuinely bring our ideas into our policy, into our projects. We can't just continue checking boxes. Thank you.
Isabel Turner. And I'm just gonna cheat a little bit on this one. So for one, I'm a white woman of privilege. But as an artist, I can assure you, I really do appreciate all colors. And I used to go to St. Joe's, which was predominantly white. It was about 5% of my classmates. There were people of color. And then I went to Garfield High School, where about 63% of my peers were people of color. And while I was attending Garfield High School, I volunteered for Teen Read, which is a nonprofit that pairs second and third graders with reading and writing deficiencies. Most of the school population was predominantly white, but almost all the children in the program were people of color. When I was 16, I also worked at Seattle Art Museum as part of the teen advisory group. And I noticed that the demographics of museums, local visitors, did accurately reflect the culture and ethical variation of Seattle and suggested that we have advertising in different neighborhoods, which ended up drawing a much more diverse audience to the events. And...
That's fine.
Okay. And thank you.
All right. This will be my last question from the organizers, and then we're gonna jump to the audience questions. So a reminder, if anybody has audience questions, or anybody has questions, write them down on a card and they will be picked up. Just wave that card in the air. Awesome. So, last question is, across South America, when cities invested in connected bike networks, the number and types of people riding have increased. If elected, what would you do to make biking a practical, safer, and more accessible option across Seattle? And what bike projects in District 7 would you work to promote?
Andrew Lewis. Thank you for that question, because I'm really excited about a specific bike project that's in District 7, down on Gilman and Marina, near the Marina in Magnolia. So currently, it is city-owned property. It's an extension of Magnolia Park. It's completely undeveloped. It's ruled a lot of invasion species. And there is a project that started by all good projects as a neighborhood matching grant. And a bunch of folks in Magnolia got together and said, "Why don't we connect this missing link here on Marina and Gilman to connect the Magnolia Village to Marymore Park, to the Marina, to the new park down there in Smith Cove, and help people in Magnolia use biking as a viable commuting option to downtown? Help people use biking as a viable option to get to recreation opportunities down through our green belt there? And allow people to go up from downtown all the way to Discovery Park and patronize the villages and businesses in Magnolia Village." So I'm very much in favor of that project and hope to see it moving.
James Johnson. Biking, like many recreational activities, such as sports, has a way of bringing communities together and bringing different types of people together to interact many times for the first time. Unfortunately, in many parts of our city, communities of color don't have or don't have the attitude to jump on bikes just because they want to go from point A to point B. Some folks would rather walk to get there. Some folks would rather carpool. There's all kinds of different ways to transport yourself around town. I think that biking has really helped out so many other parts of our neighborhoods, the disadvantaged parts of our neighborhoods, still have a long way to go. A lot of that can be brought up to speed by educational programs for our young people especially, teaching them the value of transportation, green energy, and all the rest of those kind of things that we're about, and reducing their carbon footprint. So education is really gonna be the key to get more and more diverse populations into our biking population.
Hi, I'm Don Harper. I'm on the Queen Anne Community Council. I've been there for over 20 years, where I served as the chair of the Arts Committee. I was, for about two and a half years, I was on the Magnolia Trail Committee that Andrew mentioned. And I fully support the idea of completing that track. We did run into a problem with the city. So I think as a city council member, I think I can straighten that out and get that moving. The other thing is, is I worked for about five years on connecting, trying to connect from the Smith Cove Park underneath the Magnolia Bridge straight to the bike trail. And we ran again in Ramsworth Port Seattle, security issues. But I think it's possible, or it was very willing. And I think when we replace the Magnolia Bridge, which I know will be very soon, that we can incorporate that bike trail there. Those are the ones that I know the most about. Thank you.
Hi, Jason Williams. Inspired by region or local indigenous leaders who remind us all the time to use seven-generation thinking, I've been going around talking to neighbors, asking them what vision they have for the year 2100. And over 80% of the people I talk to in all neighborhoods throughout District 7, their first response has something to do with nature or climate or the environment. And it suggests to me that we have to start planting down some signposts, as I mentioned earlier, about the kind of future that we want to have. The kind of the future that we want to have is a future marked by natural beauty, by more sustainable forms of transportation, and also by healthy communities. And I think that's why we need to make investments in the Bike Master Plan. That's why we need to finish some of the projects that were mentioned today. And that's why that when we look to maybe replace the Magnolia Bridge, you know, the one-for-one replacement, that we should consider also tying it to investments in things like bike transportation, ensuring people of all abilities can get around.
So, Gene Burris. I think I might have a little bit of a different view on this subject, but I live across the street from a bike lane on Second Avenue. And I think, while I agree with finishing a lot of the trail work that doesn't take traffic lanes away from buses and other things, I think we might have lost sight on being cost-effective in how we invest in bike lanes. When we hear about cost overruns on construction of bike lanes where there were $1 million a mile to build a bike lane on Second Avenue, I think that's the kind of thing that breeds mistrust with the city government and the way that they spend their money, and that we need to be cost-effective in the way we are spending our transportation dollars. And where it makes sense for bicycle commuters, yes. But where we're spending $1 million a mile for a few bikes an hour that go down the street while the buses are stopped, stopped, you know, on Second Avenue, I think we've made the wrong decision.
Danielle Lozak, so many. And bike lanes, wow, what a hot topic. So, I, when I'm in my car, because I do drive, I have four young boys under the age of five. It's nothing infuriates me more than when there's a biker in front of me and they're not using the bike lane. So I went to the Cassie Bike Club and I asked them, "Why, why do people do this? Why are they doing it?" And they said to me that the street cleaners do not fit on these protected bike lanes, and so they're full of garbage, full of glass, full of eels, and they're dirty. So let's work with the bike clubs and let's work with these new bike lanes that we're putting in to ensure that the city can clean them, so that when bikers are gonna use them, that they're safe for them. Otherwise, we're wasting our money. And when a bike lane ends, as it does in Magnolia, right before you're gonna go to the Smith Cove Park, you need to make sure that you have a smooth transition for bikers to be able to merge with traffic. Because right there, bikers don't use them because they have to stop before, just to get into traffic.
I think, Michael George. I think a lot of us had that same idea. A bike lane is used very often. As a downtown resident, is I go around from 91 under the Magnolia Bridge. And of course, once you get to Elliott Bay Marina, there's this tiny little wooden path that is just a break-in system. And if you could only get your bike across it, you could, again, easily access Magnolia Village. And it would really not impact car traffic at all. So I think those are the smartest decisions that I think a lot of us up here are talking about and hearing. I also think we need to think about how everybody else that's trying to cross a bike path is impacted. I actually ran into a couple of people who had the same issue. They were disabled, they had used wheelchairs. And there are a couple of places where it's very hard to cross the bike lanes to access public transportation and other things. So I think as we are rolling out bike lanes, we really need to think about how each user is going to be impacted by our decisions. Having said that, thank you.
Isabel Turner. And I go a lot of what everyone else says, but I think about biking with my family. So I'm pretty young. I'm 23. So I used to go biking with my dad. And we always went on the Burke Gilman Trail. So that was around for a long time. So that's more what I think of when I think of family biking, because I've seen these bikers go on the bike lane and even crossing them. Sometimes I feel like I could get hit. And I don't think it's really fair, honestly, because they don't have insurance. They don't have license plates. You can't give them a ticket. I had a friend in high school that died because he accidentally ran a red light, wasn't wearing a helmet. And I see a lot of bikers not wearing helmets. I've been T-boned by a bike, one, twice. They don't have any insurance, so you can't really do anything about it. But as a driver, I have to pay money for car tabs and insurance to protect them. And so I think if we want to fund better, safer bike lanes, we could very easily do that by just giving them a license plate and maybe holding them accountable a little bit, the same way that they would park their bikes or use their wheelchair and then park it in the middle of the sidewalk. I just think that's inconsiderate. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim Pugil. I think we have to do a few things. One, if we promised people, the voters, the levy voters in Move Seattle, that we were gonna give X amount of money to bike lanes and to further advance the master bike use program, then, and we say now it's too expensive, so we have to cut some, then we have to take the same rate or the same amount of cuts to the rapid rides, to the sidewalk improvements, to the bridge improvements, to everything else, so that everyone who voted for that Move Seattle levy gets cut at the same rate and the same percentage. That's only fair. If we don't, then we lose trust with our voters. I think we also need to do public-private partnerships. The Expedia Project down here along the waterfront, they put $900 million into that project. A lot of that went into a new bike lane. That's gonna make biking a lot safer and a lot quicker to get to and from downtown Seattle.
All right, we're gonna move to audience questions. And I think we're also going to move to 45-second answers so we can get as many audience questions as possible. First, I'm gonna do a mini biking round, which is, how many of you support funding a $400-plus million Magnolia Bridge replacement? Okay, all of you. All right. So here is, here's a question from the audience. How do you justify paying $420 million on a one-for-one replacement of the Magnolia Bridge, considering that is half the amount of the entire Move Seattle levy?
I started on the last one, but I'm happy to start again.
You're up.
I have a question to get started.
Yeah. How do you justify support for the Magnolia Bridge replacement, given that it's half of the entire Move Seattle levy?
Okay, thank you. James Johnson. I justify my support of it because it's needed. I mean, Magnolia Bridge is 90 years old. And it went through the earthquake, the squall and quake. It has braces up and down the legs. I don't know if you ever see this thing. I drive over it every single day. And so I know it's needed. It's a matter of time before we have to replace it. The money's having to come from various spots that we have available to us, be it federal government, state government, county, Port Seattle, and even possibly a small toll that I think the Magnolia residents would be okay with, 25 cents, 50 cents, just to go up and down the bridge every day like I do. I think we'd all be okay with that, and that's how I justify it. It's very, very much needed.
I'm Don Harper. Just so you know, I was on the campaign against the Move Seattle levy. And why? Because it was the worst written levy I have ever seen. I spent seven years on two parts levy oversight citizen committees. It taught me how to read levies. Before then, I didn't really pay attention. I read that levy. It was badly written, so I don't like the comparison. If we don't have the Magnolia Bridge, the estimates by Eston says it will take a one-hour commute time from 15th Avenue West using Travis to get to the top of Magnolia Bridge, or to top of Magnolia. How would you like to have a one-hour commute 10 blocks from your home? The Magnolia Bridge is a part of our Eston infrastructure, and we need to fund it.
Jason Williams. Yeah, Magnolia is formerly served by public transportation and only has three points of entry. When you think about public safety, when you think about moving freight in and out of the village for local businesses there, as well as employees who have to commute from other parts of the neighborhood, I absolutely will prioritize replacing the Magnolia Bridge, one-for-one replacement. What's more, though, is the bridge is also a symbol, isn't it? It's a symbol of the kind of infrastructure investments that we need to make in Seattle. Not just Magnolia Bridge, but I talked about the Bike Master Plan and other parts of infrastructure. When we think out long-term and the kind of Seattle that we want to build, if we're going to add density in places like Magnolia, if we're going to in other neighborhoods throughout the area, then we need to make important infrastructure investments. And that means also improvements to public transportation. Thank you.
Gene Burris. I agree that the Magnolia Bridge is a symbol. I think it's a symbol of the city government falling down on the job. And I know this bridge is going to have to be replaced since the squall and earthquake, 17 years.
And they've known this bridge is going to have to be replaced since the Qualy earthquake 17 years ago. They've done nothing to get the funding. And in the meantime, we've chased, chased poor transportation spending options like the First Avenue Streetcar. So I would cut that $410 million estimate by $150 million overnight by canceling the First Avenue Streetcar and putting that money towards the Magnolia Bridge, which is what the shit sits, which is what the city should have been doing for the last 17 years anyway. Thank you.
Daniella, love it, so many. And it's right that there are only three points of entry into, into Magnolia. And the majority of all of the buses are served by the Magnolia Bridge. It is the main throwaway in and out of Magnolia, and it needs to be replaced. So how do we spend $400 million? Well, we don't waste $200 million on streetcars that don't fit. We don't waste all of this money that the city is currently doing. We buy the non-commercial-grade escalators for the UW Transit Station. That costs $5 million to buy wrong escalators. Let's make sure that we have an independent audit of the city to find out where all the money is going, so that emergency vehicles can get to and from Magnolia. We are, thank you.
Michael George. We should have been reserving for the Magnolia Bridge for a long time. We didn't do it. That's on city government, not on the people of Magnolia. So we have to replace that bridge. Beyond that, it is going to have huge repercussions on 15th and a whole bunch of other places surrounding, surrounding Magnolia if we don't replace it. I think the biggest opportunity to add affordable housing in this city, definitely in the metro district, is Interbay. We're going to have a light rail system running through there. We cannot continue to put more traffic through 15. We are also going to need to boot cars through there. So I am going to do everything I can to replace that bridge. And I'm also going to do everything I can to connect it to density in Magnolia, as well as developing Interbay the way it should be, which is by taking a lot of affordable housing. Thank you.
Isabel Kerner. And so first things first, I want a new estimate on the bridge. I don't trust Eston right now. And I've actually come up with a little bit of a different plan. And no one probably likes it on my website. In the Magnolia questionnaire, you can read about my bridge plan, which would cost far less than $400 million further with Move Seattle levy. The problem with that is, is that if we basically take away the streetcar, then we are breaking a deal we have with the federal government to provide funding for major transportation. If we break that promise with the federal government by pulling all the funding from this project, they're never going to give it to us again. And we're going to lose even more of it. And I, I do agree, we could put a toll on it, 50 cents, dollar, whatever. I'm sure that would be fine. But it needs to be renovated. I don't, it's not, it's not that big of a bridge. It's, you know, it's, yeah.
I do support a one-for-one replacement. I'm Jim Pugil. And I, I feel, I agree with James that when the bridge was originally built, it had several funding buckets that helped fund it. Doorbelling in Magnolia, I've also heard that some of the folks would support a small toll. We have replaced the 14th Avenue South Bridge that connected Georgetown. We saw the damage it did, it did that community for the two and a half years it was closed. And the Lucille Street Bridge that we replaced in the late 80s and early 90s, that connected Beacon Hill with Georgetown. These are all important neighborhoods. We have to keep our neighborhoods connected and provide good public transportation. And as was mentioned, that's where a lot of the metro buses go.
Andrew Lewis. Yeah, I think it is an essential bridge, we need to replace it. Because a big part of shaping the neighborhood of Magnolia is going to be maintaining that essential connection to the rest of the city. The Magnolia Bridge serves 265 metro buses every day. It's the biggest mass transit connection that Magnolia has to the rest of the city. As I've doorballed in Magnolia, I meet a lot of renters in some of the areas down near Magnolia Village who are completely dependent on that bridge. They're the ones that would be impacted most by removing it. I think as we start having these conversations about densifying in Magnolia Village, densifying up in 34th and Government, it makes a lot of sense to replace the bridge. We're not going to do it alone. We'll do it by working with the state, working with the port, working with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad, who are some of the partners that helped build the bridge the last time it was up.
Okay, another audience question, which is, interpret this however you want, but how do we deal with the tents that are heating foot traffic on sidewalks? And I'm going to assume that this is primarily in downtown Seattle.
Yeah, hi, my name's Don Harper, and I would remove them. One thing that has happened here is we've lost control of our city. And we had an opportunity to start to correct this years ago. And we just played around. We've been playing around with it for, since Murray was elected. What I think we have to do is we've got to get our city back. Because just in the same way we treat our children, we have to give them discipline. The same thing has to happen with ours, the citizens of this city.
Jason Williams. Yeah, I mean, we are in an emergency. The fact that we now have just as many homeless as high schoolers is, is not okay. And that's why we need to help people, first and foremost, keep them in their homes. As I mentioned earlier, that means starting first with improving the financial resiliency of people who are at risk, ending up on the streets in the first place. Diversion is a program that's, that now City of Seattle is double down on. And it's a way in which that we can keep people in their home. And it can also serve as a platform in which we can deliver critical services, like mental health services, substance abuse counseling, and other contributing factors to homelessness. So we should start there. Because right now, King County is exiting more people out of homelessness than ever before. The problem is the rate of entry exceeds that of exit.
Gene Burris. To answer the question directly, I too would remove them. I think we need to provide shelter for people that need shelter. And reasons that people are on the streets are varied. And so the types of shelters that they're going to need are varied. What, what is needed for a woman escaping domestic violence is very different than a young man that came here because his family kicked him out of the house because he was using drugs. So we need to provide shelters, but we can no longer leave it an option for people to live on the sidewalks. That's simply not an option that the city should, should allow. We should provide other means of sheltering people, but sidewalks are not allowed.
Daniella. Daniella, love it, so many. And we need to remove the tents, but we need enforcement of laws. We need social workers, healthcare workers, job training. We need adequate services for people that are living on the streets. We also need enforcement. We can't allow people to carry three grams of heroin, which is 30 doses, on them without prosecuting. And our law enforcement has just gone out of control. And our police officers are spending the majority of their day as social workers. And that is not okay, because then they can't do their job. So I would remove the tents and offer services. We have kids right now living in tents. They should be going to school. They should not be worried about where they're going to live or where their next meal is coming from.
Michael George. I, I believe we need to create more shelter with coordinated services because I also agree we cannot have people living in our parks and on our sidewalks. I have spent my life trying to make cities level. When people, I live downtown with two kids. We treat our parks as our backyard. Our, when I leave my house, it is very scary sometimes. We run into some pretty difficult situations, and that's hard. I also know a lot of these homeless people on the street. I try to get a lot of them into housing. The coordinated system does not work very well. And it's sad to see them deteriorate over time. So we need to step up. We need to provide real alternatives for these places, for these people to go where they can get help if they need it, or just housing, as most people need it, it's just housing. But we need to do something because we cannot continue to grow the city and denser if we don't. Thank you.
Isabel Kerner. So I refer to this as a camping crisis, because I believe that's quite literally what it is. And I've visited a few hundreds of these camps, and I've talked with hundreds of these campers. And they help me come up with a solution. So like I already mentioned, it's all shipping containers. There will be 23 sites. One site for the extremely drug addicted, one site for the extremely mentally ill, the non-alcoholic veterans who were once in the domestic violence and whatnot. 23 plots of vacant city land. We'll have a fence around them, and we'll trade with tents so that we can collect database information, swipe in, swipe out, keep everything up structured, pay them to help rehouse the containers, and put it into a fund that they can access to exit the program with a job that they are interested in. And then we'll pay for their affordable housing. And $40 million is worth the cost.
Thank you.
Jim Pugil to the direct question of can we allow camping on sidewalks? No. It's dangerous. It's a terrible public policy for those who are camping. And it's unfair for those who are using sidewalks for their transportation. Sidewalks are meant for foot and some bicycle transportation. We have to rapidly rehouse those who are homeless. We have to work with the police department. Quite frankly, 90% of police work is social work. That's my experience after 35 years. But we have to work with the social service providers and government. And as a city council person, I am going to advocate for housing first and then take care of all the other co-occurring disorders. If a person has those, whatever, we got to fix it.
Andrew Lewis. So to get back to the question again, we, we all can agree that no one should be living in tents. But we need to be really careful that when we treat homelessness as a public safety problem instead of an affordable housing and public health problem, we're just going to be asking for trouble in this city. We need to be doing what other cities have pragmatically done, like San Francisco and Austin, where you rely on first responders, EMTs, public health professionals to do outreach to encampments, to get people into some kind of permanent placement. Because if we just sweep the encampments on the sidewalk as the first response, they're just going to set up another tent two blocks away if the underlying problem isn't met in an effective way. So I would rely more on public health responses, more on first responders, to get people into some kind of situation better than the tent on the sidewalk.
James Donaldson. I was a former business owner for 28 years and led business here in Seattle for seven of those years. After we closed up in 2007 during a great recession, I swore I'd never do business in the city of Seattle again. As a business owner, okay. I am very much a small business advocate. I think that we should create a no encampment zone around every retail shop operating here in the downtown core, from the front door all the way up to the curbside. No encampments allowed. And if somebody does set up a camp there, we give our, our police officers the authority to come by a paddy wagon and just sweep them on up and take them off to some other place where we can deal with them better than there. We want to create safety for our shop owners. We want to create safety for our tourists as well. Thank you.
All right, last question. This is going to be a 30-second question. And then we all have a minute to just give a quick closing statement. If you're elected to the city council, which committee would you like to chair and run? Start with this.
Jason Williams. They have very long names, very long names. I can't recall specifically the name of the committee that I most want to serve on right now. But I believe strongly in improving economic opportunity and security for all. And that's why I would like to work in fully funding the Seattle preschool program. Right now, we provide funding only for 3,000 children every single year. The need is over 10,000. That means we're leaving, we're leaving 7,000 children behind every year. And we need to start first with universal access to affordable, high-quality early learning.
Gene Burris. I, I agree, they do have long names and put sometimes unrelated topics. But the one I would, the one I would want to chair is the one currently chaired by Chairman Juarez. Councilman Juarez is the committee that decided to impose the waterfront lid on downtown residents. And I would love to chair that committee and oversee the waterfront lid. And make sure that Magnolia doesn't get imposed on them for the bridge.
Daniella, love it, so many. And I would like to chair the committee about land use and zoning. Right now, single-family homes are extremely important in Seattle. The current city is trying to pass ordinances to have all ADUs with no parking. And the more that we build in Seattle with no adequate parking, people are getting pushed off of the streets. We also need adequate green space in all of our new developments. Parking and green space is very important. We want to reduce our carbon footprint. Let's do it with keeping our trees.
Michael George. I also like to chair the land use committee. It's something I've spent my career on. I think we could be doing much more with our policy to create more affordable housing in a way that doesn't impact neighborhoods. I really do believe that we need to move beyond. This is either supply or a subsidy to really fix middle-income housing. There are a lot more things that we could do. I've thought through them. I would love to get it done, because the city is not going to work if there's only housing for people with secondary homes. And that's why I am running. Thank you.
So on the committees, I would most like to be interested in chairing. Our Finance Neighborhood, the Planning Land Use and Zoning, as well as Select Committee on Homelessness, because I really do believe my shipping container idea of land will work. And I do need 23 plots of the city's vacant land in order to make it work. And a small amount of money and partnership from businesses of all sizes, in particular the tech industry. And I think that we declared it a state of emergency a while ago. I haven't seen a lot of urgency, and I just don't think it's working. So, thank you.
I agree that we have to shorten up the names of our committees so we know what they are. I would like to sit on transportation and infrastructure. I think we've got some pretty darn good departments. Having worked with other people at all levels throughout every city department in my 31 career year, or year career with the city, I know that we have great employees. But we have to look at our infrastructure and we have to look at our transportation. 20 years ago, we had 21,000 people living downtown and 55,000 people visiting. We now have 88,000 people coming into downtown every day.
Andrew Lewis. So the committees get shaken up every two years. But I would want to hang on to the one that has housing as part of the portfolio. I, I think that as someone who grew up in the city in a working-class household, we really need to make sure that if you work in the city, you can aspire to live in the city and keep that as something that is true about Seattle. I would also, we have a small arts office in the city of Seattle. And arts is usually one of the departments that gets mixed in on the odd end of one of these committees. We have a huge arts presence in District 7 from the Opera and Seattle Center and all the theaters. And I think that'd be really interesting to work on too.
James Donaldson. The committees that appeal to me right offhand would be land use and zoning. I'd be very much interested in taking a look at that, being a part of that committee, and projecting our future uses of zone and land permitting out for the next 20, 30 years. Also, transportation is going to be another big one. And with Seattle growing the way it is, this greater Seattle metropolitan area growing the way it is, it will continue growing. There's no stimulus tied right now. People want to come here for great opportunities, a great place to be. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got three committees. So my name's Don Harper. One, I would be looking at the utility city-like. I have a professional knowledge about electrical distribution. I'd like to have a lend act for the city. The second one would be the one that Councilman Juarez is on now. And I would change the name. She changed it to Public Assets. She did that on purpose. She is now trying to take our parks and turn them into housing. This is wrong. Parks are for parks. If we build density, where are our kids going to play? Next one would be land use.
All right. So I said that everybody would get a minute to close, but I'm looking at the time. And it turns out I lied. We each get 30 seconds for a quick closing statement. I would start with you.
Gene Burris. I just want to thank everyone for coming out and listening to all of us. I know everyone's busy, and I'm glad that people think this is important. I never thought I would get involved in city politics, but as I say, city politics kind of got involved with me. I've been a downtown resident for 10 years. And my neighbors and I have become increasingly frustrated being told by city leadership that it's just the fact of life that we have to live with crime, that we have to live with an open-air drug market next door to our, at next door to our house. And I don't believe that that's true. And I'm here to change that.
Daniella, love it, so many. As a mom of four young boys and a small business owner, I care more about my kids than I do about myself, which is true about all, all parents. Which means I want this city to be a better place for them than it is now. And I will work with you and for you to make sure that you have our trust, that we can have an open discussion, and that I don't make decisions without first talking with you. We need the transparency within the city government, and we have completely lost that. As a Hispanic woman up here, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming today. Housing and transportation, getting those two things right are the only way that we're going to actually solve the climate issues that we face. I have spent my career and life working on those issues. We can do a lot more if we bring people with a depth of experience to make the nuanced policy that it's going to take to make this all work, which is why I'm running. I really do believe that this city can work for everybody. And I look forward to your support. And I hope that as a parent, this city will not just work for us, but that will work for future generations. Thank you.
Hello, once again, Isabel Kerner. And I would like to thank you all for coming. And I still do need to qualify for my democracy voucher. So if I So if any of you here are interested in my ideas, or maybe want to see a prototype or something, there are two forms on the back next to the Lego box. And I just need a few more $10 contributions as a statement of support. And I hear a lot of people talking about solutions, but I haven't really heard one that is competing with mine yet. So come on, everyone, let's go.
Jim Pugil. Thank you all for making the trip down here tonight, however you got here. And have a safe trip home. Thank you to SEIU and Erica for hosting this. I look forward to serving you. I served the city and the county for 34 years. I love public service. I know to be a good public servant, you have to be responsive, you have to communicate, and you have to be honest and transparent, and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Andrew Lewis. It's been my great honor to serve the people of Seattle as an Assistant City Attorney, and I hope to be able to continue to serve the people of Seattle on the Seattle City Council. I've been endorsed by the Martin Luther King County Labor Council, 36 district Democrats, the 37th district Democrats, King County Young Democrats. I hope to earn your support as well. Thank you so much for coming out here. And if you have any questions, I'm easy to track down, send me an email, and I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
James Johnson. 40 years, I've been in Seattle for 40 years. From the first day I dribbled a basketball for our dearly part of Seattle Supersonics, to today I bought my home in Magnolia. I have been part of our community in a variety of different ways, working with our young people, being an excellent role model for so many, being a small business owner, creating jobs. And I continue to bring all of those skill sets to the city council. And I ask for your vote as your African-American candidate up here on the cap. Thank you very much, Danielle, for that. Thank you.
Yeah, Don Harper. As I said, I've been on the Queen and Community Council Volunteering for over 20 years. In that time, I've helped raise over $2 million for parks and over $1 million for pedestrian safety programs. I'm a retired electrical contractor. This is not a career move for me, this is a matter of passion in trying to serve our city. I will listen to you, I will talk with you, and I will respect what you have to say, unlike our current city council. Thank you very much.
Jason Williams. Thank you, thanks again for everyone for being here, and thank you for the sponsors, Angie and Erica for moderating this. As a son of two working-class parents in Federway, my dad was a butcher, my mom a public school teacher, I want to ensure that as Seattle grows and prospers, that all can benefit. And that starts first with, as I mentioned, universal access to high-quality, affordable childcare, improvements, as well as improvements in workforce development. What's more, we need to conserve our land, waterways, and heritage sites as Seattle grows. Lastly, we can only do this through Restore Trust. As someone with experience across working all sectors, government, business, and society, this is kind of an approach, and all, thank you.
Thank you all so much. Let's have a round of applause for our speakers.